For council order, the Douglasville City Council Regular Meeting for tonight, which is Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, we'll ask Minister Brandon Kenneman, Executive Outreach Director for Crossroads Church to come into our invocation. And then we'll have our pledge allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Good afternoon, City Council, Madam Mayor, thank you guys for all y'all do. Amen, continue to lead the community. I just want to open with a quick proverbs, Proverbs Chapter 16, verse 1 through 3. It says, "We can make our own plans, but the Lord gives us the right answer. People may be pure in their own eyes, but the Lord examines their motives. Commit your actions to the Lord, and your plans will succeed." Let's pray. Father God, I would just thank you for today. God, we thank you for our City Council members and our mayor. We've worked tirelessly to continue to lead our community. And Father God, we just want to take time to glorify you because you're real, you're righteous, and you're worthy of honor and our time. And so, Father God, I pray today that your Holy Spirit will just rush through the City Council meeting, that you will lead in God's light and our leaders. God, that you will lead in God's, as can speak yours, as God, that we do as your word says, to respect and honor the authority that you place in our place because you place them there. So, God, I just thank you for these City Council members and Madam Mayor, and all they do to continue to lead our community, God. And we just pray a blessing on Douglasville as a whole, that it will be a community led by you, colored by you, God. We pray that your angels will be all over this community, keeping everyone safe and protected. God, I would just thank you for all things you continue to keep us. And so, God, we just glorify your name with your body, for Jesus by your name. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic of which we're in, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, everlasting, for all time.
Thank you, Madam Tim. We do listen to the pledge. I mean, Mr. Kenneman, we appreciate the prayer and blessings that you prayed for us for the indication. My name is Rochelle Robinson. I'm Mayor of the City of Douglasville. I'd like to welcome you to our Douglasville City Council Regular Voting Meeting. This is a City Council Regular Meeting on Agenda Items, where official action will be taken tonight on the items that were discussed last Thursday at our Legislative Work Session. If the business you're here for is not listed, ask an Agenda Item to open up time under the Agenda Item Comments from Citizens and Delegates section for you to discuss your business. I'll go over a few protocol items about how the meeting will be conducted this evening, and then we'll get into the meat of the meeting. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the Chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the Chair, and if you deviate from this requirement, a second deviation will result in us requesting you to leave the premises. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud or react to speakers. Speak from the audience. Cheer, clap, or carry on a conversation when you're at the podium. I ask that you would please just direct all of your comments and concerns to myself or the committee chairpersons when you're speaking on any items here in the council this evening. We're only required to accept public comments during required public hearings. And if you have a cellphone or electronic device, I ask that you please put those in silent mode so they won't be disruptive this evening. Now, the Agenda Items will be handled in the following manner. The committee chairperson will read his or her Agenda Item. Then that person or applicant will make his or her presentation. We'll accept new information this evening from the applicant or the audience if it's a public hearing opportunity. We ask that you will not repeat information from the Legislative Work Session, but this is just new information this evening. Myself, council members will possibly ask clarifying questions to help us make a determination before we vote this evening on those items when that person is presenting. Because we've already discussed these items last Thursday at a Legislative Work Session, we will not take questions or comments regarding each item this evening. Tonight is a voting meeting. We'll either move, we'll approve it, or deny, or take no action based on that item that's presented. Before approaching the podium, if you'd like to speak to us, there are cards that you should fill out outside, and it will give your name and address. And if you don't mind filling that card out and handing it to our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Karen Callen. Happy birthday, Ms. Callen. It's Ms. Callen's birthday. She's 21 again. And so, if you don't mind handing those cards to Ms. Callen, and she will turn those cards into our City Clerk's Department for our official records. When you come to the podium, please give us your name and address for the record. And then you have five minutes to talk to us about those items that may be a public hearing or any Agenda Item during Comments from Citizens and Delegates that's related to the City of Douglasville. This is not a question-and-answer format or a debate. We're here to hear the information, deliberate, and make our decisions. If there is some information that our staff is able to give to you, we will provide that information at the appropriate time. And other than that, if you would like to have a copy of the Agenda, paper copy there outside, if not, you can follow us on the screen. I know I've done a lot of talking, and hopefully, we're all on the same page. Each Committee will be handled by the committee chairperson, and we'll just follow the Agenda as it's presented this evening. We'd like to welcome our former Councilmember, Councilmember Mark Adams and his beautiful wife. It's good to see you. Thank you so much. Now, we'll move on. We are at item number five, which is Approval of the Agenda. So, I will open the floor for a motion for adoption of the Regular Meeting Agenda for September 2nd, 2025.
So, moved.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. It's been properly moved by Councilmember Howard Estes, and second by Mayor Pro Tem to approve item 25-338, which is the Regular Meeting Agenda for tonight. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-338 is unanimously approved. We'll move on to item six, which is Approval of the Minutes. I will open the floor for a motion to approve the minutes of the August 14th, 2025, public hearing, and the First Village Rate Legislative Work Session and Executive Sessions, and the minutes of the August 18th, 2025, Regular Meeting and Executive Session. It's a lot of meetings. I have a motion on the floor, open the floor to approve item 25-339. I have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. May I have a second? Thank you, Councilman Watts. It's been properly moved by Councilmember Howard Estes, and second by Councilmember Chris Watts to approve item 25-339. Do we have any deletions, corrections, any concerns about the minutes and the executive session?
Yes, hi. Madam Mayor, I just have a comment in regards to the minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
I wasn't here on the 18th, but I was not able to make comments because I wasn't here. But I'd like to make an official minutes that I'm not in approval of the golf carts.
Okay.
I know it's not totally not in favor, but there's still some other things. But I just wanted to make sure that that was on the...
That you put that on the record.
Yes, right, in the official minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. I hope that's noted from our Clerk's Office in opposition to the routes for the golf carts.
Actually, Madam Mayor, it would be the golf carts for West Pines. That's what you voted on.
Oh, they weren't, it wasn't the route. These are for West Pines.
The 153. Okay, I'm sorry.
You withdrew, withdraw? Yes, ma'am. I forgot. I left early that evening. And those were the golf carts. So, we have to have a renewal every five years for those carts? And so, yes, ma'am. So, that's what that one was.
Did I remove my objection?
Okay.
Thank you. Wasn't explained to me like that.
That's good. We had, that's what we talk about. So, I'm glad you brought that up.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other comments or concerns from council? If not, we do have a motion by Councilmember Estes, and second by Councilmember Watts to approve item 25-339. Do we have any other concerns? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-339 is unanimously approved. Now, we'll move on through committees, and if you have business when I call your committee, please bring that business forward. We're at item number seven, Economic Development Committee, chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Finance Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under Finance.
Thank you so much, Coach. Housing and Community Affairs Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Housing and Community Affairs Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. We're going to volley and tennis back to Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We do have business under Personnel and Organization Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have one item tonight, item 25-344.
Yes, sir.
Adopt a resolution to amend the limited special holiday dates for calendar year 2026 to provide for December 22nd and 23rd, 2026, as limited special holidays. We discussed this a good bit on Thursday, but I will turn it over to Ms. Hampton in case she has anything to add.
No, sir. Just that the corrections from Thursday night have been handled, and so, this applies only to 2026.
Perfect.
Okay.
Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, I would like to make a motion that we approve item 25-344.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. May I have a second, please? Thank you, Councilman, Councilmember Watts. So, it's been properly moved in second by the Chair, Councilmember Estes, and second by Councilmember Watts to approve item 25-344. Do we have any questions, concerns, or comments for the City Manager as it relates to this item or the Chairman? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-344 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That is all we have for the Personnel and Organization Committee this evening.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. We'll move to item 12, which is Planning and Development Committee, chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Yep. We've got just a few items this evening.
Just a few?
Yeah.
Lots.
The first item is item number 25-278. Says to consider a request for revised final plat approval to establish Youngtown condominiums for 24 units on 5.674 acres, a new alignment of Youngtown Street and Youngtown Court and landlots 738, 745, and 827. District 1 and 18, Section 2 and 3, parcel IDs 0036, 0037, 0038, 0039, 0035, and 0036. I looked up to see Mr. Gordon, and I see Marcus Thompson. What can you tell us about this item, sir?
Marcus Thompson, City Engineer, 6695 Church Street. I don't have any additional information at this moment, but I could give a brief recap for Councilwoman. Oh, okay.
That'd be great.
All right. And then, we do have the applicant here to ask any questions.
Wonderful. Do you have anything you would like to add to this from last week?
You can give us an update first, Mr. Thompson, and then let the applicant speak. Do you need it, Councilmember?
Councilmember Danley said she was ready.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'll read.
If you'll just give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Dana Bryant, 160 Whitney Street, and that is in Fayetteville, Georgia. And I was here last week, and I was just reading off the Agenda Items that Mr. Gordon gave, and nothing has changed.
Okay.
We're just, we're really excited.
Awesome. Okay, I appreciate that. Madam Mayor, Council, do you guys have questions about this? Or thoughts on it?
Just clarity. So, we're making certain that all of the units, they're being completed, and then the name is going to be changed so that everything is cohesive with the addresses.
Yes.
Correct. Just a portion of the street will now become Youngtown Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, if there are no other thoughts, questions, comments on this item, I make a motion that we approve item 25-278.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairman. I have a motion to approve. May I have a second, please?
Second.
We have dueling seconds. What do we have, Ms. Assistant City Clerk? Somebody, who said, "Press the button"? Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. So, it's been properly moved by the Chair, Councilmember Miller, and second by Mayor Pro Tem Miller to approve item 25-278. Do we have any additional comments, questions, concerns from council? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-278 is unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right.
The next item is item number 25-340. With that, I make a motion that we remove from the table item 25-298.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a motion to remove from the table item 25-298, which is item 25-340.
Second.
Thank you. Councilman Estes has been properly moved in second. Moved by the Chair, second by Councilmember Estes to remove from the table item 25-298. Do we have any questions, concerns, or comments? Not hearing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-340 is unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, now, let's go to item number 25-298. Says, "Tabled from August 4th, to consider a request for variance from Section 5.04 of the Unified Development Ordinance to increase the accessory structure height from 20 feet to 50 feet for 132.20 acres located on Strickland Street in Land Lot 190, District 2, Section 5. Parcel ID 0009 and 0108, application by Amazon Data Services." And Mr. Dana Gray is here to go over this with us.
And I have no updates for this item.
Okay. Madam Mayor and Council, as it pertains to the accessory structure for the water tanks, do we have questions, thoughts? I know we've had a lot of in-depth conversation. Okay. With that being said, then, I will make a motion that we approve item number 25-298.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Watts. It's been properly moved in second, moved by the Chair, Councilmember Miller, and second by Councilmember Watts to approve item 25-298. Do we have any questions, concerns, or comments as it relates to this item and the water towers for the Amazon building?
And this is just to approve for it to be taken off the table, correct?
No.
No, we already taken it off the table, the last, the last item. This is to approval of the, for the UDO and increase the accessory structure for the height from 20 feet to 50 feet.
It's item C.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor of approving item 25-298, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, we have five ayes and two nays. Is that correct? Pushed the button?
Didn't come up.
Five to two? Okay. Majority rules, so item 25-298 is approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is item number 25-341. With that, I make a motion that we remove from the table item number 25-299.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I have a motion to remove for item 25-299, which is to remove item 25-341 from the table. I have a motion. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Estes. It's been properly moved in second, moved by the Chair, and second by Councilmember Estes to remove item 25-299 from the table. Do we have any questions, concerns, or comments from council members? All those in favor of removing the item from the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Nay? Okay.
No, I'm sorry. Not to remove it from the table.
To remove from the table?
Yes, I vote yes.
It's okay. We have, so, aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. 25-341 is removed from the table.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next item is item number 25-299. Tabled from August 4th, says to consider a request for variance from Section 9.01.1.1 of the Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the 50-foot undisturbed stream buffer from 50 feet to 10 feet for a distance of 195 feet. In Section 9.01.1.2, to reduce the additional 25-foot impervious setback from 25 feet to 0 feet for a distance of 250 feet. For 132.20 acres located on Strickland Street in Land Lot 190, District 2, Section 5, parcel ID 0009, and Land Lot 189, District 2, Section 5, parcel ID 0021, application by Amazon Data Services. And this application has been withdrawn, so we will take no action.
Okay.
Next is item number 25-342. With that, I make a motion that we remove from the table item number 25-300.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairman. I have a motion to remove item 25-300 from the table. May I have a second, please? Thank you, Councilmember Watts. It's been properly moved in second, moved by the Chair, Councilmember Miller, and second by Councilmember Watts to remove from the table item 25-300. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns as it relates to this item? Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving item 25-342, which is removing from the table item 25-300, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-342 is unanimously approved.
Next is item number 25-300. Says, "Tabled from August 4th, consider a request for variance from Section 9.01.1.1 of the Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the 50-foot undisturbed stream buffer from 50 feet to 12 feet for a distance of 200 feet. In Section 9.01.1.2, to reduce the additional 25-foot impervious setback from 25 feet to 0 feet for a distance of 395 feet for 132.20 acres located on Strickland Street and Land Lot 190, District 2, Section 5. Parcel ID 0009, application by Amazon Data Services. And this application has been withdrawn, so we will take no action."
Okay, thank you.
Our next item is item number 25-343. And with that, I will make a motion that we remove from the table item number 25-301.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a motion to remove this item from the table. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Estes. It's been properly moved in second to remove item 25-301 from the table, which is item 25-343. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns from council? Not hearing any. All those in favor of removing this item from the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-343 is removed from the table.
Thank you. Our next item is item number 25-301. Tabled from August 4th, consider a request for variance from Section 9.01.1.2 of the Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the additional 25-foot impervious setback from 25 feet to 15 feet for a distance of 85 feet for 132.20 acres located on Strickland Street and Land Lot 190, District 2, Section 5. Parcel ID 0009, application by Amazon Data Services. And this application has been withdrawn, so we will take no action.
Okay, thank you.
Next item is item number 25-364. With that, I will make a motion that we remove from the table item number 25-302.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a motion to remove this item from the table. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Watts. It's been properly moved in second to remove item 25-302 from the table, which is item 25-364. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns about this item from the council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of removing this item from the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-364 is removed from the table.
Thank you. Okay. Item number 25-302. Tabled from August 4th, consider a request for variance from Section 9.01.1.2 of the Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the additional 25-foot impervious setback from 25 feet to 20 feet for a distance of 30 feet for 132.20 acres located on Strickland Street and Land Lot 190, District 2, Section 5. Parcel ID 0009, application by Amazon Data Services. And this application has also been withdrawn, so we will take no action.
Okay, thank you.
With that, we're going to play a little magic trick, if that's okay, and we're going to skip down to item number P.
Okay. We can't see the bunny in the hat, rabbit in the hat. Okay, go ahead.
You might, okay. Item number P is, you showed that right? Yep, okay. Item number 25-348 says, "Consider a request for variance from Section 8.02 of the Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the landscape strip to the west from 15 feet to 11 feet on a landlot of 1.019 acres at 664 Thornton Road and Land Lot 423, District 18, Section 2, parcel ID 0001, application by Kim Lee Horn. Mr. Dana Gray."
Uh, we have no updates for this item?
Okay. I know that there were a few items, yep, a few items attached to this one development. Did we have any questions or concerns on this item? No? Okay. With that being said, I make a motion then that we approve item number 25-348.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second. Moved by the Chair, Councilmember Miller, second by Councilmember Estes to approve item 25-348. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns on the landscape strip in Thornton Road for this item, council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-348 is unanimously approved.
Next item is item number 25-349. To consider a request for variance from Section 8.02 of the Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the landscape strip to the south from 10 feet to 0 feet on a landlot of 1.019 acres at 664 Thornton Road and a landlot 423, District 18, Section 2, parcel ID 0001, application by Kim Lee Horn. Mr. Dana Gray, do you have any updates on this particular item?
No, we have no updates for this item.
Okay. Madam Mayor, Council, do we have any questions, thoughts on this item?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay. With that, I make a motion that we approve item number 25-349.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 25-349. All those, do we have any questions, comments, or concerns? That this is another landscape strip. One was at the west, and now, this is at the south portion of Thornton Road. Do we have any concerns or comments from council members? Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-349 is unanimously approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number 25-350. To consider a request for variance from Section 8.01 of the Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the parking setback to the south from 10 feet to 0 feet on a landlot of 1.019 acres at 664 Thornton Road and Land Lot 423, District 18, Section 2, parcel ID 0001, application by Kim Lee Horn. Mr. Dana Gray, do we have any updates?
No, we have no updates for this item.
Okay. Madam Mayor, Council, any questions, thoughts? No. Okay. And I make the motion that we approve item number 25-350.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a motion to approve. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 25-350. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns from council members about the parking setback on this application? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-350 is unanimously approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number 25-351. Says to consider a request for a variance from Section 4.08B of the Unified Development Ordinance to allow the canopy accessory structure to be placed in the front yard setback along Georgia Highway 5 on a landlot of 1.34 acres at 9415 Georgia Highway 5 and Land Lot 160, District 2, Section 5, parcel ID 0002, application by S.K. Georgia Partners LLC. Mr. Dana Gray. Do we have any updates?
No updates for this item.
Okay. Madam Mayor and Council, do we have any questions, thoughts on this item? Then I make a motion that we approve item number 25-351.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a motion to approve. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. It's been properly moved by the Chair, Councilmember Miller, in, and second by Mayor Pro Tem Miller to approve item 25-351, which is a canopy accessory... Miller, to approve item 25-351, which is a canopy accessory structure for this application, this item. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-351 is unanimously approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. And now?
We'll go back.
We're going to go back up to item L, which was item number 25-311. But before we start with that one, I would just like to clarify that we have checked with legal and staff to ensure that there would be no ethical conflicts up here in council in these conversations. And while we were given clearance, it seems like there was just a lot of questions, so to make sure that everybody feels comfortable. And then through those conversations, we also talked about the fact that I am a downtown resident, and my constituents around there, they trust me, and they are expecting me to be their voice as well up here. So with that being said, I would like to stay up here and be a part of these conversations to make sure that we get the best possible outcome, and then I will abstain from the vote.
Yes, ma'am.
And so with that being said, I'm going to ask that our Vice Chair, Coach, takes over at this point.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right. Item L. Consider a request for a change in zoning from R2, Single Family Residential Detached District, to R5, Single Family Cottage Residential District for 5.83 acres at 8763 Elma Street and Land Lot 22, District 1, Section 5, Parcel ID 0022015B009. And this application is by Stonewall Builders, and we'll start off with Mr. Gray.
Okay, I do have updates for this item, so I'll just reiterate again, this is a request to rezone from R2 to R5. It's located at 8763 Elma Street and Cornelia Drive, which is in close proximity to Campbellton Street and the Douglas High School. Staff is going to recommend a few conditions after discussing with our applicant. He's willing to work with us on these conditions, so I will start with staff's recommended conditions. So the applicant must submit an exemption plat, application, to separate the proposed R5 development, ensuring that the portion to remain R2 containing the existing house is complement with the R2 zoning requirements. And just to remind you, there is a house on that property, and it is his intent to separate the house from his development, and that house will remain as an R2 zoning while, if approved, his other piece will go to R5. The second condition, the developer shall establish a homeowner's association. Number three, all homes shall be, shall include front porches. Number four, all homes shall have elements of brick included in their elevation design. Number five, there shall be a maximum of 15 homes. Number six, the developer must provide an amenity area, and, oh, number seven goes to the variance. So that is, that concludes our conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Any, and by the way, I do appreciate some of those conditions and that the developer was willing to, to go along with those. I thought, I think they're solid. Madam Mayor, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you, Mr. Gray, and to the applicant as well. I know we talked about the max of 15 homes.
Yes.
Okay, so that's on the R5. And brick, could it be red brick? Or does it have to, can we delineate a color?
I took a ride over there, so there's some red brick, there's some cream brick. So I can say they can keep up with the aesthetics of the neighborhood.
It would be red, or just brick. A gate, I know it, it doesn't really abut a neighborhood, but I'm trying to think of the subdivision. Can there be a gate to make certain that, or a buffer between Wood Valley and the area that these 15 homes are going to be on?
You're not referring to a gate at the entrance, but a fence that would kind of separate?
Like a fence, kind of, the privacy fence. Yes. Yes, yes. A fence or some type of gate. And then the alleyways that they would be maintained by the city. Is it private or city? What did we say? What was the best thing for the city city manager? I apologize.
After conferring with public services, they will be private.
They'll be private, when we'll be able to bring our refuge, our trucks and stuff back there like we do at River, in Riverside, okay? Riverside Parkway over in Tributary.
So that condition would be part of the variance?
Oh, so we're going to wait till you come down to that one. Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Gray, can you repeat the conditions 3 through 6, please?
3 through 6?
Yes.
Starting with 3, all homes shall include front porches. Number 4, all homes shall have elements of brick. Number 5, there shall be a maximum of 15 homes. Number 6, the developer must provide an amenity area.
Thank you.
Mr. Gray, I'm, I'm looking, I've skipped ahead to page 11, which shows the staff recommended conditions, and some of what you said I don't see in there.
We have added.
Okay. Do I need to refresh, or is?
No, we couldn't update the staff report.
But they'll be in there.
It would reflect with our city attorneys, right?
You'll just make the motion with the conditions that have been stated.
Is there anything about, can the developer agree to the, to the privacy fence or gate? For Wood Valley?
Paul Zakkus, 3500 Rain Tree Court, Douglasville, Georgia. Madam Mayor, council. Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, we can, you already have a fence in the back. I don't really know, you know, in the, I mean, are you trying to separate it from the subdivision altogether? I'm not really, have you driven down there and you see how it ends just in the, the end of the street?
I have. Is, the, some of the constituents last week was concerned about cutting through to wood gate, to the subdivision that abuts the property.
If I can, I think you're asking for a privacy fence, like an opaque fence, to be in the, in the buffer.
Oh, in the buffer.
Along the backside of the property.
My, my suggestion on this would be, you know, I don't think we have a problem with that. I think what, what would be helpful is that if we have some type of committee set up, you know, like the, you know, I was scrambling to get some elevations for you guys as far as what the houses are going to look like and some rear loaded entryways and things like that, is to have a committee to where we can discuss this, you know, before we get to this point, to say, hey, no, 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 yes, 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 and try to, try to work through that. So when we get to that, we don't have these, have these questions. And I'm on a committee now, excuse me, with a county, that we do that, that we sit down and we just chat about that, and, you know, we, we fight a little bit, because I'm, I'm a builder, and they want to do it their way, so we butt heads a little bit, but I think it's, it's, it's good meetings and, and we have those discussions, and, you know, obviously with, with Councilman Miller having his background, you know, involved in something like that with his, you know, he would be experienced in doing something like that, would be great. And, you know, I'd be on that committee, obviously not for this one, you guys wouldn't let me be, but for, for future projects, just so that, you know, is, you know, that, you know, I've got an eye for it, I know what we want to do and what we want to accomplish, and, but yeah, I don't see, I don't see a fence being an issue. I just would have, would like to have a better idea of, of kind of what you're talking about.
It's kind of like an opaque, I'm trying to think of a Cherokee, I can't remember the subdivision, but we did do a fence in the back of the subdivision to kind of separate, you know, neighborhoods and give them some privacy. So, and, and what you're speaking of, we probably could, you know, that's something we can talk about at our workshop in the fall that we have, or we typically would do on, on an individual basis for a development, but I think it's a good idea for us to maybe to consider. But for this particular one, just to have a fence to support.
Sure. And, and with, with the house that's staying R2, that's relatively easy to do, because we're going to have to separate the property anyway. On the right side, there's, there's a house that's there, it drops, the, if you're facing the house, the left side, where our property's to the left of it, it drops really hard right there. So they're, they're going to have a pretty good buffer anyway, because it's, it's just a low point, it's where the water will be going, you know, through there. I think that the front porch thing is a good idea, and I, you know, and I, I think in the future, too, if you're trying to, you know, save on impervious areas, you know, getting rid of those back alleyways, although it messes with the architecture of it, but if you have a small area and you're concerned about flooding and things like that, it'd be nice to do away with those alleys, and just, unless you're just looking for the look of the, you know, the front of the house.
Yeah.
But that's just my opinion. But, yeah, so, I, I mean, I, I don't think that's, I don't think any of those things that Mr. Gray called me today to discuss these, and I don't think any of those things are unreasonable.
Okay.
And we did have an area on the plat for, and a many, obviously, we're dealing with a very small area, so, you know, we can't put a, you know, we can't put a amphitheater or anything like that in, but we would definitely, we've got an area right there that we can, you know, we can make really nice.
Don't give us any ideas.
Stonewall Pond.
Any other questions or comments on this item?
Thank you. With the HOA, can we look at doing a rental cap? I know that there's not very many homes over there, so it would...
Yeah, the, we, we don't really, you know, a rental situation is when you're sitting on a bunch of houses and you're going, oh crap, what do I do? These are going to be in users. I mean, we, we plan on selling every one of these, so we don't, but when you say rent, I mean...
I mean, because typically what happens is people buy the homes, and then they rent them out.
Sure.
And trying to preserve some of the, the essence of home ownership in the downtown, I think it would be beneficial to have a rental cap.
I think that's, I think that's very reasonable.
Yeah. Some people will buy like the Americas Home for Rent or something, they'll have those, and then they'll become...
Well, you know, and I, you know, not to get off subject here, but I dealt with that in the county, because that was my project that got, but, you know, the, the, those guys, we really researched those guys, and, you know, rents were 27, $2,800 a month, you had to make 100 grand a year. I mean, so it wasn't, you know, I think people, when you say rentals, you think Section 8, and it starts, you know, scaring folks, but that was actually, those folks actually did a pretty good job, but, again, I just didn't present it properly. But, yeah, I mean, and, and, you know, I, I think a reasonable amount on the cap is, is fine. So, you know, 15 houses, you know, so it's not, it's not, you know, it's not, it's not a deal killer by any means.
What, remind me, what is the buffer? What, how, how many feet is the buffer between the houses and the existing homes that are already there?
So, whether existing, you know, we're down in the end of that street, so there's nothing near us.
Well, what will back up, I'm talking about the buffer between the new homes that you're proposing and the existing homes in Lake Forest and on Campbellton Street.
Well, Lake Forest, those guys have a privacy fence on the back of their property line, so Ms. Les' house in particular, just because we've, obviously, I've been to his place multiple times, his fence, you know, it's beyond, you know, he's got his house, his pool, a gazebo outside area, and then there's a distance, and then there's a privacy fence. And I think the way that this topo, and, and, you know, again, we haven't spent the money on the engineering, because I don't know where I stand with you guys, but we haven't spent the money on the engineering, but we think that those houses were probably not even overlooked that. We think that it's a lower area, and if anything, Mr. Chu may see the back, you know, the roof of these houses, you know, not, you know, not, you know, a top story, you know, looking over a swimming pool. So I'm not really sure what that distance is. I know it's on the site plan, and we, we sent an overlay, I don't know if you can put it on the screen, but we sent an overlay this morning as well.
Okay.
So you can kind of see the distance.
Right. And look, I, I get it, we, we live in downtown.
Yeah.
Even during the summertime, I can see my neighbors in front of me, on sides of me, behind me, and, and I get it, that's absolutely fine. I am conveying what some of my neighbors have called to ask me.
Well, so you'll have, so you'll have the fence, we'll, we'll probably have some type of retaining wall, you got a 12-foot alleyway, you've got a driveway entering to the house, you know, you know, I, I don't know the exact distance on that, but I mean, you're, you're looking at twen, you know, 20, 20 feet minimum, maybe 25, something like that, I would think, before you see the house. So there, there's room, because you, you need to back, be able to back in and out of your driveway, obviously.
That helps, okay. That helps answer my questions.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this item? Madam Mayor, are you all ready for me to make a motion?
So before you do, I just want to make sure we know, okay, so the exemption plat to ensure that the Boggs family home stays as an R2, to establish an HOA, are you comfortable with doing that rental cap at, say, 10 or 15%?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah.
We just need to get it in the minutes.
Sure.
Um, front porches around there, brick of some sort on the homes, a 15-home cap and an amenity. Okay.
HOA, do we do that?
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 25-311.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. Make a motion to approve item 25-311 with the conditions that were read into the record.
With, yes, I'm sorry, I forgot. With the conditions that have been mentioned tonight.
Yes, sir. I have a motion to approve the conditions that were read into the record. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Estes. It's been properly, first and, and second, to approve item 25-311, we've had some conversation. If we have, we have any other concerns or comments from council members, any clarity on the conditions that the developer has agreed to? If not, all those in favor of approving item 25-311 with the conditions that were aforementioned, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-311 is approved with the conditions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item M. Consider a request for a variance from Section 3.06B of the United Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the minimum side yard setback from 7.5 feet to 5 feet on a lot of 5.83 acres at 8763 Elma Street and Land Lot 22, District 1, Section 5, Parcel ID 0022015B009. Application by Stonewall Builders, and Mr. Dana Gray will handle this.
And I have no updates for this item.
Mr., does, does the applicant have anything to add to this item? Okay. He may have left the room. Anyway, any comments on this item? Okay, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve 25, item 25-312.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I have a motion to approve. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Estes. It's been properly moved in second, moved by the Vice Chair, Councilmember Watts, second by Councilmember Estes, to approve item 25-312. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns from council members? I don't see any issues. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-312 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
One abstention.
One abstention, yes, okay. So we'll move in right along to item N. Consider a request for a variance from Section 11.03E4 of the Unified Development Ordinance to reduce a minimum alleyway width from 20 feet to 12 feet on a lot of 5.83 acres at 8763 Elma Street and Land Lot 22, District 1, Section 5, Parcel ID 0022015B009. Application by Stonewall Builders. Mr. Gray.
Yes, and we do have updates for this item. Staff recommends the following conditions. The alleyway is to be paved with asphalt. Number two, the alleyway is to be one-way only. And number three, the alleyway shall be private.
You mean privately maintained?
Maintained by the HOA.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Any comments or questions on those conditions or decided? Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Gray, if it's privately maintained, they're going to give us, give the city access to go through the alleys to pick up, because they'll have their trash receptacles in the back, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they'll allow the city to go in, but it's not a public street where people can come and park like they would just on Campbellton Street or something.
Correct. And the city will not maintain it.
Okay. But it should be paved and one-way only?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions or comments? All right. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 25-314.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. Have a motion to approve item 25-314. Do we have any other questions, comments, or concerns as it relates to this item? The only other thing I remember, I saw the Dr. Allen here, the fire chief, we did say that there was accessibility to get to the, okay.
Correct.
Just making certain citizens know that, because it's alleyway, they still can get in for emergency purposes, for ambulance, police, fire, all of that.
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments outside of myself?
Madam Mayor, my motion once again did not include, but recommend approval with the conditions as stated by Mr. Gray.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. So item 25-314, with the recommendations that were forementioned for the alleyways being paved one-way and privately owned and maintained, do we have any other questions, comments, or concerns from council? I don't see any. All those in favor?
We need a second.
Oh, I apologize, you second. Mayor Pro Tim?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. I apologize. Thank you for keeping me on track. So it's improperly moved and second moved by the Vice Chair, Councilmember Watts, second by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim Terry Miller to approve item 25-314 with the conditions that were read into the record by Mr. Gray. Now, do we have any questions, comments, or concerns? If not, all those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention one. No nays and one abstention. All those in favor, y'all said aye. So the item passes, 25-314. Did they vote?
Yep.
Yep, it passes. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have one last, last item.
Woo.
Item O. Consider a request for a variance from Section 9.01 of the Unified Development Ordinance to build part of the development in the stream buffer on a lot of 5.83 acres located at 8763 Elma Street and Land Lot 22, District 1, Section 5, Parcel ID 0022015B009. Application by Stonewall Builders. Mr. Gray?
And we do have one update. Staff recommends the following condition. The disturbed buffer will be returned to its condition prior to disturbance with the addition of native plants as required.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. And if I remember correctly, it was also stated the other night that there will be no structures after it's all put back. There won't be any structures in the stream buffer.
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments by council? With that being said, I recommend approval of item 25-315 with the stipulation as stated by Mr. Gray.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. Have a motion to approve item 25-315 with the recommendation stipulations that were mentioned by Mr. Gray. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Estes. It's been properly moved and second to approve item 25-315 with the aforementioned stipulations or recommendations given by Mr. Gray. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns as it relates to this item? I don't, he's going to never see anyone. All those in favor of approving item 25-315 with the special recommendations, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it with one abstention. So item 25-315 passes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to turn it back over to the chairman, and that's all I had.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair.
Well, Madam Mayor, that was all that we had this evening for planning and development.
Thank you so much. Would you mind taking Public Improvement and Beautification Committee?
Madam Mayor, we have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Hello, Madam Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
No business, Madam Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had no business tonight under Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you, sir. Technology Committee chaired by Councilmember Elena Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. And our last stated committee, Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
No business, Madam Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have any other business to come for council tonight? From council members? Thank you. I don't see any. Update, updates from our city staff? Our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson?
No business, Madam.
Thank you, sir. Staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan?
No business, Madam Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. Our Police Department Deputy Chief, J.R. Davison?
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Our city manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton?
I just need a brief executive session. It won't take more than 10 minutes.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Hampton. Do we have any staff reports? Don't see any. Comments from citizens and delegates? If you all sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to talk to us about any business, remain to the City of Douglasville. I don't see any takers. Okay, if not, then I will open the floor for a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss property acquisition after a brief recess. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Estes. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Councilwoman Watts has been properly moved to second, Councilmember Estes, and second by Councilmember Watts to adjourn into executive session to discuss a property acquisition after a brief recess. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns from council? If not, all those in favor of approving item 25-370, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-370 is unanimously approved. We are adjourned to executive session to discuss a property acquisition after a brief recess. This meeting is adjourned to executive session.